All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Here.
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Vice Chair Blanco.
Here, thank you.
And Chair Dickerson Abson.
All right, thank you for that. Next item is approval of planning commission minutes from August 6th. Any comments or revisions? Otherwise, do we have a motion to approve?
I so move, Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes approved. Item number four, public comment period. Actually Dana, do I need to go through the the meeting access points first? Or do I jump into the item four? I know that we sometimes cover other items, but maybe not anymore. I'm just thinking to myself, do you guys cover just some of the mechanics at first? Or do I jump right into the public comment period?
So Chair Blanco, what you'll do is, under the public comment period, there's a part that you read under that. So you'll read that first and then ask if there's any comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So for public comment period, speakers may provide public comments on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum 15 minutes for public comment period. Unless the majority of the commission objects, the chair may provide speakers, speaker more or less time to speak. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific member thereof. So with that, are there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? And I don't see any speaker slips and we don't have remote access anymore, so with that, we'll close the public comment period and move into the public hearings. And for the public hearings, the order of proceedings will be as outlined on the agenda, so we'll start off with the staff presentation. And the first item, item 5A. And I believe we have a recusal. Commissioner Mohajer has a recusal.
That's correct, Vice Chair. My employer may have a financial interest in this project.
Thank you for that. We'll see you back here in a little bit. And are there any ex parte communications to disclose of the other commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, yeah, I have none either. So with that, can we get a presentation from staff, please? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, good evening Commissioners. Greg Vine, Associate Planner with the city. Tonight I'm presenting a plan development and conditional use permit, PD 2025-002 and U 2025-003 for PDA architects to construct a new Hyundai Automotive Dealership and Service Center at 957 East Battles Road. This item was presented at the August 7th public study session. Outdoor repair, proposed canopy on the west side of the building, the design of the service bay roll up doors and the retention basin was discussed. I've provided additional information regarding these discussions throughout my presentation. As a reminder, the reasoning for the conditional use permit along with this PD permit is that automobile sales and service are a conditional use listed under the C2 zone. Site is located at the northwest corner of East Battles Road and Shepherd Drive. To the east across from Shepherd Drive is the Santa Maria Nissan and Santa Maria Mazda dealership. And then further to the east on the corner of Battles and Bradley is the Santa Maria Ford. The four and a half acre site is zoned, planned development, general commercial. First Christian church, the campus there is directly to the east and that's on planned development, public facilities. To the south is the Azure Apartments. And to the southeast is the homeowners currently under construction, the Chevy and Cadillac dealership. The site was approved for an expansion storage lot for the adjacent Nissan Mazda dealership through a permit amendment in 2015 through the zoning administrator process. The improvements included additional parking for the adjacent dealership, parkway improvements, landscape improvements, new driveway approaches, retention basin on the north side of the property and a lot merger that was to be processed through Santa Barbara County. Here's a look at those improvements made from the street view, the corner of Shepherd and East Battles, looking northwest. And another view looking north along Shepherd Drive. The applicant proposes to construct a 19,000 square foot Hyundai dealership and service building operating Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. With slightly reduced hours on Saturday and Sunday. The existing parking area will be enlarged for additional auto display and sales areas as well as designated customer and service center parking. New landscaping will be added throughout the parking areas on the perimeter of the site and as well surrounding the basing area. New building will be situated on the western side of the property with the showroom towards the front facing Battles Road and the service center at the rear. 311 total parking spaces are proposed for the site. The project is conditioned to provide a total of 84 parking spaces for the service shop, employees, customer parking and customer parking. And that's to conform with municipal code requirements. Remaining 227 spaces will be for the display and sales of vehicles. There's a one car podium that's proposed on the southern portion of the site along Battles Road adjacent to the existing driveway approach. The, there's a canopy that's proposed to the west of the building. That's for three executive parking spaces and will be labeled as such. Outdoor repair and services prohibited on the site as is outdoor storage of interoperable and/or partially dismantled vehicles. Here's the floor plan for the proposed building, so I got adjusted 90 degrees to your left there, so north is now on the left-hand side. So as mentioned, the showroom and sales area are located on the southern portion of the proposed building. Employee meeting areas, offices and parts storage are located towards the middle. And the 14 bay service shop is proposed on the northern half. When vehicles arrive for service, customers will pull through a covered drop-off area on the eastern side of the building and drop vehicles with staff in this area. The building will be 26 feet in height, well under the allowable 70 feet for the C2 zone. The south elevation highlights the main customer entry and showroom while the east and west elevations accommodate service bays and support functions. The northern elevation provides additional service access here on the bottom. Landscape trellises are proposed on the eastern elevation along Shepherd Drive and glass roll-up doors are utilized for the service drop-off area. The building has a clean, modern look with stucco walls, metal panel accents and earth toned colors that follow Hyundai's national branding. Large glass storefront windows open up the showroom to the street, giving people a clear view of the vehicles inside. The overall design uses durable materials, adds visual interest and fits in well with the other commercial buildings in the area. At the landscape plan, the municipal code requires 15% landscape coverage for commercial zones and approximately 10% has been provided. As allowed with appropriate findings, the applicant is requesting a reduction through this plan development permit. Proposal includes new landscape islands throughout the parking lot and on the eastern edge of the service area, including climbing vines to fill out the proposed trellises on that building face. All new landscaping, including drought tolerant shrubs, accent planting and trees are proposed surrounding the retention basin. And the project is conditioned to rehab existing landscape along Battles and Shepherd. As mentioned during the study session, landscape within the basin is not counted towards the landscape requirement. And that's per the municipal code. The high quality architectural design, attractive streetscape improvements, appropriate buffering and usable landscape areas offset the impact of the reduction in the landscape. They're essential to the operations of the dealership and meet the intent of the code. This project qualifies as a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill development under CEQA guidelines since the project site is less than five acres. It's substantially surrounded by urban uses and is consistent with the general plan and Santa Maria municipal code. Project will pose no significant effects on traffic, noise, air and water quality. No further environmental review is required. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that the commission by motion approve plan development permit PD 2025-002 and conditional use permit U 2025-003. I am available should you have questions and the applicant team is available as well.
Thank you Greg. Are there any questions at the moment for staff? Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you Chair. Just wondering on the landscaping, the 10% versus 50%, even though the basin isn't counted, isn't the did you get the landscaping in front of the basin, that one fence? Is that counted? I mean, it's visible from the site, I would think that that would, that would count towards some of the landscaping?
Yeah, Commissioner Seifert, Chair, the landscaping surrounding the retention basin is included in that landscape total. It does count towards it, anything within the basin area does not count.
So even with that surrounding perimeter, that's still a 10% on the overall?
Correct, yes sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lopez?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the landscape thing, I wasn't sure if the, that basin was counted towards that. It seemed like the basin is pretty large, so it's a landscape basin, is that not factored into that 10%?
Chair, it is not factored. Any of the landscape within the basin itself does not count towards the landscape, but just the perimeter areas on the north, southeast and west do count towards it.
Okay, and they've got, do they have landscaping on the interior, like in the parking medians and stuff? I can't, is that what the brown is?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. That was the only question or clarification from me, so if there are no other questions to staff, does the applicant want to present or have a presentation they want to make? Step up to the podium, please. State your name and address for the record.
John Alman, 1705 La Mirada in Carpinteria. I'm the contractor and the owners and their management team are here. We were happy to accept Greg's presentation tonight, had nothing else to add, but if there are any questions, we're certainly here to answer them.
Sounds good, thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant?
Chair, I just noticed, I have a show on my computer, but I noticed on the floor plan, there's a, and this is just for my own information, actually. There's an EV storage area next to the equipment shop. What is, what is stored in the EV storage? Why is that a separate area there?
Batteries.
So that's, oh, so that's a battery storage?
Yeah.
And then, of course, the fire department's looked at that and they're going to make sure you got all the right heads and volume and everything.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, it looks like there's no other questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We went through disclosures already. Went through questions, let's go ahead and open the meeting to the public. I don't believe there are any written communications. Okay. And I see that we do have one speaker slip for this item. Lori Tamora.
Good evening Lori Tamora. Representing myself and wanted to just say that I'm very much in favor of the project. I think it will be a good asset for that region. And we always encourage the auto dealerships in the city to have strategic locations, encourage more sales. I do want to note that I had the opportunity to go through the conditions of approval and there's two conditions that want to just raise a concern about and that's condition 50 and 51. Those two conditions talk about an added layer of review for the project and that includes county flood control. And the question that has come up in recent times is why are we sending projects that are going through plan check through the city for their grading permit and drainage? Why are they being sent to flood control when there isn't a flood control feature that they're directly impacting or changing or designing? And so this does involve added cost, added time in the process. So had conversations with city staff today in regards to these conditions. It is becoming a standard condition for all projects. The response was that anything more than an acre will be sent to, or needs to go to flood control for their review. And I thought one acre is a small piece of property. Why are we adding this additional environmental or additional plan check review and time and cost to the applicant and landowners? We would suggest that this condition only apply to projects that directly impact flood control features within the city or somehow are a much larger project than a project of this size. We have incurred some time delays with projects going through the added flood control process. And of course, there's a deposit and there's a billing rate for having flood control do this review, so it's an added cost to the project. I don't want to delay or impact this project in any way. I just think this particular condition, the way both of these are worded needs to be looked at again. It is also a condition on the next project. So it is a standard condition that now has rippled through all of the projects and I think based on our experience that this is something that the city should reconsider. The level of review that's needed for an onsite basin that is not impacting a flood control feature. So that's our request for tonight. And again, support this project and believe it should go ahead and be approved. So thank you very much.
Thank you Lori. Could we have staff maybe just address that condition in general and maybe clarify that?
Yeah, I'll take this one. So Mark Mueller, Principal Facility Engineer for Public Works Department. So recent recollection, we've started having this as a standard condition of approval since at least 2020. Recent email from Dana Eadie with a direction from Kevin McKeon, previous Public Works Director. You know, we've had, my understanding is that may have been there may have been flood control involvement previous to that. I'm talking about my own recollection of the, this process, the billing permit review process. The idea of, you know, there's no, the project's not directly touching a Santa Barbara County flood control feature. All the water from the city does go to the streets. You know, you're required to retain the 25-year storm onsite and you're allowed to meter out at a rate that, you know, the city has agreed upon with Santa Barbara County Flood, this is a historical rate. That's our established grading and drainage standards set long before I started working here. And those rates go to the drainage features throughout the city. So whether that's the channels or the large regional basins that are maintained by Santa Barbara County Flood, those are the rates that, you know, have been set historically. We feel it's appropriate that as the entity that owns and maintains those basins and has to you know, that they have the oversight and understanding of developments that are going to be impacting their infrastructure. We did have a conversation with Santa Barbara County Flood today. We'd love to have a sit down and discuss, you know, is the one acre limit, does that make sense? Is that too small of a project? I don't think there'd be a significant savings cost if city staff performs the work. Someone still has to review the hydraulic study and review any of the storm or control plans so that if it, that went from one to a five or 10 or whatever the limit threshold would be, that review would still have to happen. So and maybe there's efficiencies that can be gained. So there's, I think there's a larger conversation to have. And we're willing to have that conversation. And just, I think it's important for the city and Santa Barbara County Flood to have a good working relationship for all residents of the city. If those flood control facilities were to fail and there was flood damage that happened to another property, is that because there's oversight or lack of oversight? You know, there's reasons for those facilities to be designed as such. So that's kind of the thought process from the department.
Thanks Mark. Yeah, I sort of agree with the city stance a little bit here because you know, flood control is the downstream purveyor of all drainage around here, so even if it's not directly impacting, even if there's no facility on the development site, I think eventually it's going to impact the downstream condition that flood control has to manage. And so I think it's, it's appropriate that the city and flood control be coordinating to make sure, I mean, there's a good chance that there's no comment, right? Or that there's no impacts to the project and the review at least happened. And there's been some concurrence on flood control side that there is no comment or maybe there is something, but I think it's, I think it's wise, you know, from a stormwater management and flooding perspective to be coordinating, so yeah, I understand that there's, there's always a delay with more reviews. There's always a chance that there's going to be an extended timeline. And that's kind of unfortunate, maybe things can happen sort of in parallel so that there is no impact to schedule and that would be, you know, I think that would also be good for the applicants so that it's not like, well, you're approved, but hold on, let me send it to flood control and suddenly it's another timeline, so I think we can mitigate the schedule part probably. There's always a cost, like you said, Mark, if it's reviewed by the city or if it's reviewed flood control, it's still a cost to review that potential impact.
Yeah, Commissioner Blanco, I could just address that last part. We encourage the applicant or development community to go in parallel to, we don't want to be the one in between, we don't want to be the middlemen. That just adds a layer of bureaucracy of, hey, we got to, now we got to take in your money and then now our finance department's got to talk to their finance department to get money and that just creates.
Sure, yeah, that doesn't make sense.
So it seems, it'd seem more efficient if they worked directly with Santa Barbara County Flood and then when Santa Barbara County Flood gets approval, they send us a letter, email saying, we have no further comments. And that's, that is totally okay with our department.
Very good. Any other comments from commissioners?
Thank you Chair. I did speak with Lori Tamora on this particular subject, but not on this particular project, just to be clear. In reading through the general plan update, action econ 2.1.1, regular review and update city permit procedures, fee schedules to improve efficiency, enhance clarity, thereby streamlining the permitting process, identify opportunities to engage stakeholders in the review and recommendation process. I believe this is a shining example of what we're talking about in the general plan and what we've been recommended by a very highly, a high cost to the city of this review. We're adding layer upon layer of getting these projects situated and done. It's a minimum of $3,000 to flood control. Flood control is impacted, it's a county entity, it's now no longer in the city's purview. This is a city project, the city should have full control over this. You guys work with the flood control on a daily basis, you're engineers, you all work together. You've worked together up until, apparently 2020, we've done just fine doing our own basins. I've built plenty of them myself. They've been landscaped, they've been maintained, we've never had an issue with it, we haven't had any issue with the downstream. We did have an issue with flood control on the county property on Union Valley Parkway, I talked to the engineer of record on that. Explained to me why that happened and they're doing everything they can to alleviate that problem for the future. So this to me is another layer, we're going in the wrong direction to get projects approved and ready to go. And for a least amount of cost and a least amount of time. This is something that you're, I believe your department can handle. And I, I'm against sending it out to the county for any reason. This, it's just an added layer which even our own people that we've hired are telling us, we need to get rid of these layers. We got to peel the onion back rather than adding more layers to it. So that's just my opinion on this. It's, I'm not going to do anything to your project, you know, I don't want it to affect you guys at all. But I do feel it is a problem of adding more time, money and energy that it's going in the wrong direction. The county is an entity upon itself that if you've dealt with them, if you've gone through their, through their process, it can take you years to get a project permitted. These guys want to get their project done, they want to get it done for the least amount of money, we want them to get the, get up and running, we want taxes to the city. And I believe that you guys are really experts at your job to the point where you can take this four acres of land and make sure that this one acre retention basin works for the city. I will feel safe about it driving by in a rain. And I'm sure everyone else in this room will as well. So that's, that's just the way I look at it. We're at a point where with the interest rates the way they are, we've approved how many hundreds of units that aren't getting constructed right now for various reasons? The Acquist Apache project on Blosser, we, one of the conditions of approval is to take that open ditch and completely put it underground with a huge tunnel in it, adding, flood control will be involved, I'm sure on that. Adding a whole nother layer to the onion on that one. And it's been approved, they accepted it. But again, it just adds to these projects and adds to the, to the costs. I mean, we're we're in a time right now where building has slowed down, interest rates haven't come down, people aren't doing what they were doing and I think we need to do everything we can do to help that process get back on its feet. So that's just the way I feel about this particular, and I didn't talk about this project with Lori, but I did talk about this issue. So that's my feeling, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Seifert. Yes. Heather, sorry.
If I can just chime in, I think we've heard some really good information tonight and some, as Mark said, this is part of a larger discussion. We're talking about a shift in major policy and how the department reviews items and projects and processes them. And the place for that larger policy discussion really isn't on a specific project tonight. So I would advise the commission to leave the conditions as are for tonight. But certainly staff has heard and Mr. Mueller has said that he already has arranged to have some dialogue with the flood district, I believe with some stakeholders about this. And maybe there should be a shift in policy, but that isn't something that's, anyone is prepared to analyze or to formulate this evening. But I think it's loud and clear that this is definitely an area that we should look into and make sure whether we are doing it the best way for the city and the developers and everybody's projects. I just would hope you would not I just would hope you would not make a decision tonight without letting that process evolve.
Thank you for that, Heather. Yeah, I don't think that was our, the intent. I just wanted to address the, the comment and see if there was any other additional comments from the commission, but certainly no bearing on, on the issue at hand right now.
If, if I could just add one comment to that.
Sure.
I appreciate the invitation to work on this item. If there is a decision to alter the process that currently exists, I hope that this project and the project, the other project tonight would benefit from that rather than going down the way the conditions are currently written. I don't know, I'm just bringing it up. I don't know if there's a, or if something else comes along, phrase that can be added to these two conditions that allow the door open, that they don't have to go through this extra review.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that would work, Lori. That seems like something we're not maybe prepared to also address at this moment.
Sure. I understand.
Heather, is that right? Yeah, I don't think we can really address that, but your comment is noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think we have any other public comments. I don't think we'll have rebuttals, do we? No rebuttals. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and return it back to the commission for discussion and possible motion.
Thank you, Chair. You guys have come to the study session, which I always highly recommend. We've seen this project. We've discussed it. It's going in the right place. It's the right project. It's a good design. I can totally see supporting your project. I appreciate your, your work coming to us beforehand, make sure that we had all the bugs ironed out. I think it's a good project. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I agree. I, I think that it would be a lot nicer on that vacant lot. It's been a car storage area for probably, what, 10, 12 years? And that building looks, like Commissioner Seifert said, a great fit there. All the auto shops or all the auto dealers are there. One thing that I was going to ask is, the gates that are on both entrances, those, those are closed every night? And they open when you're, during your business hours? Okay, so would that affect trash pickup at all? Because I know they do it pretty early in the morning. But that might be something you guys can work with. But that was the only thing that I kind of saw with looking at the site plan. But no, I like the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Yeah, I sort of echo the remarks that have been made already by the other commissioners. I think it's a good fit for, for the area and for the surrounding development that's already there. I, I do think that the building and the architecture is very attractive. I think it's, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it's, like Commissioner Seifert mentioned, it's, it's going to be a huge plus for the community. And so, yeah, I think, I think I could support the project. But do we have a, any other discussion or, or motion on the table?
Is there a way to word something about the flood control that if, if something did come up before they, I, I think it's, it's not going to happen before they pull their permits to their stuff. I think it's a little bit too late for that. But is there a way that we could put something in there, Heather? Just to say that if there was an alternative to that, that they could utilize it?
I think the better strategy would just be that staff has heard the concerns and if, before this gets to that point, staff has agreed to some other agreement with flood control as to handle these things, I'm sure that's something that they could finesse and wouldn't require a modification or anything to the condition.
Okay, thank you. Then Chair, I would, I would by motion approve Plan Development Permit PD 2025-002 and Conditional Use Permit U2025-003.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll take that. Thank you.
Okay, we have first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Aye.
Chair Blanco.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Guys are good to go. Thank you very much.
What's that? I do, I do. Two years ago. You didn't know that? Oh. Is Dana coming back or?
Yeah, she's coming.
Shall we wait for Dana to start? Item 5B?
I'm ready.
You're ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Cody's ready to go. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Item 5B is the Seaside Packaging Warehouse and Distribution Facility Permit Amendment at 1300 West La Brea Avenue. Can we hear from staff?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Chair Blanco, members of the commission. I'm Cody Graybell, Senior Planner with the city, and I'll be presenting the amendment for the seaside warehouse conditional use permit. And this project is proposing a new 31,000-square-foot warehouse building at the 1300 block of La Brea Avenue. The item was presented to the public in the commission at study session on August 7th. The primary discussion was regarding traffic and there's been no changes to the project since that meeting. The project site is in an area of the city that's been developed with a mix of industrial, residential, and agricultural development. To the north of the site is the Santa Maria Valley Railroad tracks and the Central Coast Truck Center. To the south of the site is single-family development, the Westgate Ranch subdivision. To the east of the site is the Old Dominion Trucking Facility and multiple freezers. And to the west is a flood control basin that's maintained by the county. The zoning is M2, general manufacturing, and the site's surrounded by a mix of industrial, residential, and commercial zoning. And there is an open space parcel immediately to the west of the site, which is the flood control basin. The Planning Commission did approve a conditional use permit at the site in 2021 on March 16th, and that is for Building 1. That has been constructed and is currently operating. This proposal tonight is for a second warehouse building and it would support the existing storage capacity of that building. And there is going to be additional environmental review discussed tonight. Part of that 2021 review included a mitigated negative declaration that was adopted by the Planning Commission as required by the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. And there is an addendum to that MND proposed for the project tonight. Site is partially developed, as mentioned. It's 6.2 acres in size. On the eastern half is Building 1, the 40,000-square-foot warehouse building that's operating. And then on the western half will be Building 2, under review tonight. So this is looking onto the site from La Brea, pardon me, if you're facing northeast. Due to some of the increases in demand the applicant has experienced, there is some temporary staging of outdoor storage that's occurring. They have confirmed that there's adequate space in this proposed warehouse for those increased demand levels if the project was reviewed and approved and constructed. So there is no outdoor storage proposed as part of this project. There's also been some improvements that have occurred with Building 1 along the frontage. There is landscaping, street trees, as well as perimeter fencing with a rolling gate and an electric fence that was reviewed and approved by the city, so those all would remain. This is facing northwest on La Brea and there is additional landscaping proposed tonight that would be placed between the front gate and the building that would help screen the site, and it would be placed approximately here. The project would basically utilize forklift operators only. There's no office uses proposed. The forklift operators would transfer boxes from the existing warehouse. And these would be picked up by the tractor trailers and truck drivers. And then they would be sent to various off-site locations such as ag fields where those boxes would then be loaded with produce and then sent off-site to grocery stores or other off-site locations. So there's no agricultural produce or any other products that would return to the site. The hours of operation are from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday, and it would increase the number of employees from 6:00 to 10:00. And there would be four to 10 deliveries per day. No idling is required on La Brea. And a traffic study was reviewed by the city and it found that the existing road network could adequately serve the cumulative development while still maintaining acceptable service levels. So this is the proposed warehouse on the left-hand side here. It's 31,000 square feet. There are 30 parking spaces required and 30 provided. Site access would be from two existing driveways on La Brea. And the loading dock is located at the rear of the building, approximately 300 feet back from the sidewalk. And there is adequate drive aisle width available for both automobiles and large trucks to circulate around both buildings. The floor plan is open storage and as mentioned earlier, there's no office space. The architectural design is consistent and matches the existing warehouse on the site. The building is 37 feet tall under the 40-foot maximum in the M2 zone. And building materials include galvanized aluminum siding, a blue metal roof, and matching blue trim at metal canopies and roll-up doors. And the roll-up doors shown on the sides here are where the forklift operators would move boxes over to the first building. Landscaping is proposed next to the building and along the perimeter of the site and adequately screens the parking and the facility from La Brea. A total of 26% of the project site area is landscaped with the code requiring up to 15%. And 16 trees would be planted on-site. And there are bioretention basins located at the front, rear, and sides of the property. So as mentioned, this project does qualify for an addendum to the 2022 MND that was approved for Building 1 per Section 15164 of SEQA because there are no substantial changes generated from the proposal, no potential significant impacts would occur, and there's no new significant environmental effects that otherwise had been addressed in the previous MND and its mitigation monitoring program. So those mitigation measures from the 22 MND will carry over to this project and are condition of approval, number 23 for this permit, and no further environmental review is required. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions. One, adopt a resolution to approve an addendum to the MND prepared for the seaside packaging project. And two, by motion, approve a permit amendment A 2024-0001. Staff and the applicant are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. First, are there any expertise disclosures?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, me neither. Thank you. Any questions of staff at the moment?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Cody, one thing you said that nothing has changed on the traffic, which I, when we were at the study session, a big thing has changed with the traffic on that street, which was something that made me lean a lot more towards supporting this project, was that the Titan Industries, they, they've shut down their operations there, which that was always my biggest concern on that street, when the strawberries came in, that, that street filled up so bad that you couldn't get down it to save your life. So the traffic has changed a little bit, but it's, it's actually for the better. That's what we found out in the study session. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Any other questions or comments? I guess questions first.
Oh, actually, I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cody, is the, is the multipurpose trail on the north side of the tracks or is it about this property?
Commissioner Lopez, let me pull up the site plan. I believe it's north of the property.
I think so, too.
So just so I understand the question fully, I haven't been north of the site. Would it be in this approximate area?
Yeah, yeah. I, I know a while back we were looking at some changes to that multipurpose trail. I don't know if some of that actually went into the railroad easement, but if we're looking at it, I, I don't remember if it was on the top side, which would be the north side or the south side. And looking at the landscape plan, it looked like there's some trails, but those might be railroad tracks. I just wanted to clarify. On sheet...
Yes, Commissioner Lopez, just looking at this landscape plan here, I know that there are easements for the railroad and that might, I believe that is what's displayed here on this, this image. It wouldn't be the multipurpose trail, but a railroad easement.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was all.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mahajer, any questions? No?
Just for clarity purposes, thank you, Chair. So the new building that they're proposing is including a loading dock. Does the first building also have a loading dock? Is there going to be a total of two?
Commissioner Mahajer, I believe, yes, there is a loading dock on the first building, but I could have the applicant clarify if they would like.
I see a nod over there, like maybe a no. Go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Billy. I'm the owner of Seaside Packaging. Right now, we're using a temporary loading dock. We don't, we don't have a permanent one. So that was the idea, was to add a loading dock to that facility permanent for, for the whole site. And two was just redundancy, just in case there's one truck parked there. We don't have a lot of traffic there. It was just, just in case there was one offloading and we'd have room for another one to park so it wouldn't be in the way of anything else. So does that answer that question?
It does. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I, I don't have any other questions. I think the, the study session was very helpful in clarifying the, the proposal and it's good to hear that Commissioner Seifert has been out there and verified that Titan's not out there, so that, that seems to help. So no other questions? If there are no other questions, does the applicant have any comments or presentation they'd like to make?
No, not this time. I, I think, just appreciate all your help and everything's run pretty smoothly now. And, no, didn't have anything to add. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, any other questions, even to the applicant at this point? No? Okay. So let's open it up to the public. Any written communications or letters or anything? No? I don't see anything. No speaker slips for this item. So with that, let's go ahead and, and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for, for any final comments or motions.
I love these new microphones.
They're not that new anymore, but yeah.
It cracks me up. No, I think this project is, you know, we, we approved the original project and this is just an expansion of your business, which was always anticipated. I'm really happy to hear that you're doing that well, that you're able to build this new warehouse and, and the, the amount of landscaping you're going to put in there, I mean, it's, it's a very, the, the place is out kind of at the end of the street. So thank you very much for making it a beautiful area. I'm, I, I was very reluctant at first when I heard about your, your project until I found out that Titan was no longer there. And we don't know what's coming in there, but nobody ever knows what's coming in an empty lot or an empty building. I'm certainly not going to hold that against you. And with the amount of trips that you're having, that was my biggest fear, was the traffic on that street. And, and absolutely seems like it's a much better than it was last year or before Titan moved out. So, no, I can totally see supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez or Mahajer?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have to agree, and first off, thank you so much for serving the ag industry, and I am so glad to hear that the business is growing and that you need more storage to really accommodate that. I did want to be considerate of the housing to the south, but given what's proposed, I do believe you have sufficient screening with the landscaping and the no outdoor storage, so I definitely can see supporting the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, any comments?
Just biggest concern was the traffic, and I do know that Titan moved out to Betteravia, east Betteravia, and like Commissioner Seifert said, who knows what's going in there, but you can't really put any blame on this project with what would happen down the street. Yeah, I like it. I think it's a good use. Thank you.
Thank you. I really don't have any much else to add. I think the site makes sense. Obviously, you're just expanding the business. It is a good sign for the ag industry. There's a demand there, so that's good. The traffic's always seems to be a problem in that area, so it's good to hear that at least your operations may not be impacted, and the area won't get worse at the moment, so hopefully we can keep that. But yeah, no, I do think it's a it's a good asset for that area and for the community in general, so that's it for me. Any motions, any more other comments, a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion. I'm not sure, do I just read the adopt a resolution, or how do I how do I handle that one?
One by one?
Number one.
Yes, we'll need to do the environmental first, so you would go ahead, if it's your preference, to make a motion and then read off number one first, and then we'll have a separate second motion for the number two.
I'll do my best. Thank you. So I would move to adopt a resolution to approve an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Seaside Packing Project.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Blanco?
Aye.
I would move to approve the permit amendment A 2024-001.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Blanco?
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion passed.
Congratulations. Good luck on your business.
Good luck, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, last item on the public hearing, actually, yeah, this is the last item, 5C, is zoning tax amendments for accessory dwelling units, Title 12 of the City of Santa Maria Municipal Code. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Frank Albro. I'm principal planner, and I'm here to present amendments to the Title 12 and specifically accessory dwelling units, Chapter 12-56. The commission has already seen 99% of this proposed amendment, excuse me, the first time was at the April 17th study session of this year, and then again on June 4th, just a couple of months ago, the commission saw the proposed amendment and did recommend approval of the amendment to city council. We're back before the commission because there's one additional item we want to add to the amendment. So as I noted, the commission has seen something 99% the same on April 17th and on June 4th. The additional amendments are due to recent state amendments to what's called the state, or excuse me, Starter Home Revitalization Act, and those amendments took, became effective on July 1st, 2025. So to go back, these are the items the commission has already looked at that we were proposing to place into a new updated ADU ordinance for the city. One, the first item was that on multifamily sites with existing multifamily dwellings, the state changed the number of detached new construction ADUs from two up to possibly eight ADUs on those multifamily sites. There are some limitations along with that, but those were details we had looked at last time. The second item was that ADUs can only be sold separately from the lot under very narrow circumstances, having to do with affordability restrictions, the developer of the ADU is a recognized nonprofit, and some other items. The next item was that local agencies, the city, is now prohibited from denying a permit to legalize an ADU that was built without permits unless it has something to do with health safety regulations specifically, and then in those cases, the city can require that those health safety items be addressed before permitting that ADU constructed without The other item was that in 2024, the state did reorganize all the ADU regulations that had come prior into one large section of state law, and so another part of the amendment that the commission has already looked at was we are simply renumbering our references to match up with the new state code numbering system. So the new item that the commission is asked to look at this evening is, again, having to do with the Starter Home Revitalization Act, and that's government code Section 66499.41. And this act and this section of government code allows for the subdivision of existing multifamily zoned parcels and vacant single-family zoned parcels without any city discretionary review or hearings. Its potential is to split single-family lots or multifamily lots into up to 10 parcels, and other sections of state code would allow one unit on each of those parcels. So you could have a single-family lot, and if it was large enough, split into 10 parcels with 10 new single-family dwelling units built on it. The twist to that is the state code also would allow ADUs for each of those 10 units if 10 lots were created. However, unlike most of the laws regarding ADUs, the state has actually given us an option in this case, whether or not we choose to permit ADUs when a parcel has been subdivided in the manner described under the Starter Home Revitalization Act. We are recommending that we not also allow ADUs when subdividing single-family and multifamily parcels in this manner. Therefore, the added portion to the proposed amendment before the commission is a section that says specifically that, as provided by, for in the state code, the City of Santa Maria chooses not to permit an ADU or a junior ADU on parcels created through the exercise of the Starter Home Revitalization Act. So that is our new recommendation and newly added provision. It's Section 12-56.08 of the draft ordinance. And with that, staff concludes our presentation. We do recommend that the, and I apologize, it says city council, but recommend that the planning commission approve a recommendation to city council to approve the zoning text amendment, C 20250001.
Thank you, Frank. Do we have any questions of staff? Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. Can we go back to that, up to eight ADUs on a parcel? And and how that, so it says detached ADUs on lots on lots with an existing multifamily dwelling, increase two detached ADUs to eight ADUs, limited to the total number of units on the lot. That's in addition to converted spaces that are allowed for a multifamily property, correct?
That is correct. The one provision, as you've noted, if you had a multifamily existing, it has to be existing, multifamily dwelling with four units, the maximum you could do under this provision was the was four detached new construction ADUs, but that does not affect the conversion provision of non-occupied space.
Okay. And then going back to the, what was it, the up to 10 parcels, would would those, is there a limit on those parcel sizes?
Yes, for single-family zoned properties, one, you can't subdivide a single-family parcel that's larger than one and a half acres. However, if it is smaller than that size, each lot has to be at least 1,200 square feet. So theoretically, and these are just kind of number calculations without actually trying to put something on the ground, you could look at our normal or typical R1 lot is 6,000 square foot minimum. That could potentially turn into five separate lots, each with a dwelling unit, under the Starter Home Revitalization Act provisions.
But you would still have to provide all the utilities for for each one of those lots, right?
Correct. The other provisions, subdivision map act provisions would apply, however, things like minimum lot width, minimum lot size, of course, those sorts of things wouldn't apply. It's very, very convoluted and complicated to try to figure out what exactly could happen. One part of our subdivision map act and our subdivision ordinance is that each lot has to have access to a public street, and that could very well affect the configuration, which might also then affect the lot pattern. But it's all very hypothetical, and until you actually start working on one, you're probably not going to know precisely what can happen.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mahajer?
Quick question, Chair. And just to clarify, the city opted out because it would be, in theory, too many, I guess, structures on one subdivision lot?
Correct, Commissioner Mahajer. The the city's view is that, one, the city permits quite a few ADUs through normal processes on single-family and multifamily lots. In 2024, we permitted 435 ADUs, and 239 ADUs were completed and received permits for occupancy. So that's a number of ADUs, and to contemplate the potential, as I said, a single-family standard lot might get up to five separate single-family units constructed, and that's enough. You know, these would likely be lots already in a single-family neighborhood, and to have that drastic increase in density is going to be very noticeable and probably receive a lot of reaction, and also likely, you know, affect the neighborhood, and to essentially allow that to double by permitting an ADU or a JADU on each of those, you know, five lots, that would just exacerbate that problem. That's one aspect of the Starter Home Revitalization Act, as with other sections that directly deal with ADUs. The, any ADU built on one of these parcels could not be recognized as a unit, so we wouldn't be able to calculate an ADU as part of any density calculation. So it would be the whatever the base number of units and parcels allowed or possible through the Starter Home Revitalization Act would, we'd be limited to that in terms of density calculations.
And then, so somebody wants to go and subdivide a lot under this, under this act, that limitation's going to be immediately apparent as soon as they try and do that through you guys?
Yes, as this is, as soon as this goes through city council, and if the council does decide to adopt these changes, it's a 30-day waiting period until the ordinance itself becomes effective. But with the action in process, so far, we have not received any applications for any subdivision under this act. We've had inquiries, but no applications, so once this becomes effective, it'll be part of any review of a proposal to subdivide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead. Commissioner Seifert?
So Heather, this this goes back to the situation where, as we don't approve this, the unintended consequences are going to come back and bite the city because we don't have a plan in place, as with with all these ADU ordinances that we've approved in the past.
Yeah, I think that would be, staffs would agree with that. So the the first three things that you already saw when this came forward, those were state mandates, that we had to modify our ordinance to be in compliance with state law, so we didn't really have any say on those. This one is kind of the opposite, which, as Mr. Albro said, we rarely get this opportunity, usually the state, or this option, usually the state says, housing, 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 and you can't, no local control. In this instance, and I think it's because, I would guess, that they're recognizing that the Starter Home Revitalization Act already is allowing for such a high density in a single-family lot that they went ahead and gave cities the option of allowing ADUs in addition to what's already allowed under that act or not. So in this instance, we do have a little bit of local control, and staff has looked at it and feels like we should exert that local control in this instance to limit the number of units that can be built because we think the the number already in the act is more than plenty.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, all the planners that came before me and all the planners in the city that sat where you're sitting, no one could have anticipated what's happening to our city with this ADU ordinance and what's being thrust upon us by the state. And what is, what is the limit? If it's under 700 square feet, we don't even get any fees for that particular building, is that correct? I mean, I mean, nobody's paying Public Works, we're not, we're not, we're...
If it's under 750 square feet, the ADU, we do not get development impact fees, no.
And and, you know, Mr. Mueller over there is trying like heck to make sure that we have enough water, that we have enough sewer, that the floods floods are right, and he's not getting any, any money to do this with, and and this this impacts our city so much when we, when we're adding all of this unprepared-for building. It just, it's not something that any planner or planning commissioner past could ever even have dreamed that this would happen to us. I can't imagine that they would have ever thought of this, because otherwise, they would have planned for it. They would have put in bigger sewers, they would have put in bigger water mains, they would have, they would have planned to have the infrastructure in place in order for us to, and the parking, and the and the sizes. It just, I won't get on my my soapbox, you've already heard it, but it just, adding all these additional units to where they were never planned for, I just don't believe is the correct way to go about this. But with with your recommendation... But with your recommendation that it actually gives us a little bit of control, I could see supporting this, even though I, I just, it makes me crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions of staff? Frank, Dana, how, how often do you guys foresee us kind of going through this exercise? Is this going to be like an annual exercise, or is this? I mean, I, I mean, it's hard to look into a crystal ball and figure that out, but like, at the rate we're going?
Chair Blanco, are you, are you speaking about the amendments to the ordinance?
The amendments, yeah.
It's typically annually because the state is consistently updating many of these bills or there are new bills. And so we keep track of those throughout the year and then bring them to you when we need to. And, you know, we, we brought this to you, as Mr. Albro mentioned, a few months ago, and then noticed that we needed to make this additional change, which is why you're seeing it again. But yeah, it could be an annual thing, just depending on what the state does with these different Senate bills.
And it seems like the pattern is to be less restrictive or more open to additional units? And, I mean, generally speaking, does that seem like correct?
That's the trend we've seen. But as Ms. Witten mentioned, I mean, this is one item that we do have some local control over to say, yea or nay on. But yeah, typically, it is expanding on what's already been permitted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are another questions, let's open it up to the public. If there are any written communications or anybody from the public that wishes to speak? I don't see any...
No written communications.
No hands up, nobody really wanting to speak about it, no written communications, no slips, so, all right. Well, we have limited, limited audience, so didn't expect too much. With that, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or motion. Any other discussion? We heard some discussion from Commissioner Seifert, I think?
No.
No? Okay. Well, I, I don't really have anything to add. I think what's been said has been summarized as maybe the feelings of some of the Commissioners, but anyhow, if there are no other comments, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. By resolution that we recommend that the City Council approve the zoning tax amendment, Z 2025-001.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second? Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Chair Blanco?
Aye. Motion carries. Off to the City Council. With that, move on to our final item, and that is, I believe, regular business, all reports from Planning Commission and staff.
Thank you, Chair Blanco and Commissioners. So just to look at the schedule ahead, we have a study session scheduled tomorrow at 1:30 at Shepherd Hall in the library. The general plan update is the topic for tomorrow. I'm going to be giving you a presentation on the draft, the public draft general plan, and just going over the different elements that are out currently for public review and the environmental impact report. And then the hearing on September 17, we don't have any items scheduled, so that meeting's going to be canceled. And then September 18, we also have that date reserved for the general plan update if it's needed. I think we can discuss that tomorrow as a Commission, as to whether an additional meeting on the 18th is needed. My thought was, is to go over everything with you, and then if you had specific questions, we could tailor the September 18 study session just on those particular items. And that is it moving forward. Really don't have a whole lot else on the agenda yet for October, but there's still time to add items for that.
Dana, so at this point, is the general plan, is it still out for public comment?
It is. So it is the general plan, the public draft, and the environmental impact report are both out for public review and comment until September 28. So it's a 45-day review and comment period. And our website, ImagineSantaMaria.com, has a link there where you can go and look at all the documents. And there's also a form for each of the specific elements of the plan or sections where you can go in and make specific comments, and those will come back to us. And the public's welcome to send written comments to me directly or email them directly to me, and my information is also on the website as well. So looking for feedback from the community right now.
Okay, great, thank you. And then tomorrow's meeting, are we expecting that to be an hour and a half, or do we have a...
We are expecting an hour and a half at the most. I guess it depends on how many questions you all have. This information's really going to take off from the last study session we did on the policy frameworks, so a lot of the information won't be brand new to you. We had, I think it was back in March, we had a study session on the policy frameworks, and there was a public review period at that time, and we took all of that public input, and we did make some adjustments to some policies. And now the, the draft general plan is in its entirety. So there's graphics and photos, and it's a completed, essentially completed document now. So if you, I did send you all a link, I please recommend taking a look at that before the meeting tomorrow. You know, it's a lot of information. And we're still anticipating taking this to City Council in December, so it's moving right along.
It takes quite a while to take a look at it, believe me.
I understand.
I'm not sure, I passed the Econo one, but I'm on, I don't know which one I'm on. There, there is a lot of information in that to look at.
Yeah, so that's why I reserved two study sessions, because I know it's a lot of material, and I want to make sure that your Commission has enough time to really talk about it and look at it before we get to the hearing where we as staff are asking for recommendations.
I appreciate the time, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or reports from Commissioners? No? Okay. In honor of Chair Dickerson. Oh, man. Oh, adjourned, thank you.